Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission Meeting of April 7, 2014. My name is our Commissioners Gagnon, Kronzer, Bender, Brown, Lipke-Pier, Slack, and Forni. At this time, please be sure all electronic devices are on silent. The first item on the agenda is to approve the actions from the meeting of March 24, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those actions? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Our next item is to approve the agenda. We'll take the agenda that I hope you picked up on the table outside, the green agenda, and sort it according to what will be discussed and what will be on the consent agenda. I'll go through item by item. Items that go on the consent agenda will be approved as recommended by staff in their report. Other items that we pull out for discussion will be, I will hear a staff report and then discussion from the commission and decision. So, item number one is Northeast College Prep, 2511 Taylor Street Northeast will be on consent unless someone wants to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation. Anyone on item one? Okay, that goes on consent. Item number two is Kipstand Academy, 5,000 Oliver Avenue North. That also will go on consent unless someone wishes to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation. Anyone on item two? Okay, that's on consent. Item number three, a change of nonconforming use at 3041 Aldrich Avenue South. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number three? Okay, that's on consent as well. Item number four, the East Lake Craft Brewery, 920 East Lake Street. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number four? Okay, that will go on consent as well. Item number five is Alliance Steel Services, 81 St. Anthony Parkway. Same thing, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify? You want to speak about that? Okay, we'll put that on our discussion agenda. Item number six is 700 Central, at 708 Central Avenue Northeast. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? Anyone on item number six? Put that on consent. Item number seven is the Essex Hotel Project at 1014, 1018, and 1022 Essex Avenue Southeast. Anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number seven? If not, that also goes on consent. Item number eight we were going to discuss, is that right, Jason? Okay. And item number nine, a zoning code text amendment about the sale and display of goods outside of businesses. Is there anyone wishing to speak on that item? If not, we will put that on consent as well. So, I have for consent, number one, two, three, four, six, seven, and nine. And for discussion, we have numbers five and nine. Five, eight, and nine, I'm sorry. Five, eight, and not nine. I'm sorry. Let me repeat that. For consent, one, two, three, four, six, seven, nine. For discussion, five and eight. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Next item is a report from the Chairman of the Committee of the Whole. Commissioner Brown?
Yes, thank you. At the Committee of the Whole meeting on March 27, 2014, the commission considered land sales at 2413, 2423, 2425, 2503, 2507, and 2511 Penn Avenue North. Those properties are part of the West Broadway Curve Project, and the commission found that sale of those properties for that use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The commission also considered a sidewalk modification project on Cedar Avenue and also determined that that project is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the committee report? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. Next is in the action items. Okay, we move to public hearings. We'll do the consent agenda first, so I will open the public hearing for items one, two, three, four, six, seven, and nine. Again, anyone wishing to speak on any of those items? Okay, I don't see anyone. I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as recommended in the staff reports. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. People here for those items should check with staff to find out about next steps. We move on to items for the discussion. The first item is number five, Alliance Steel Services, and Hillary Dvorak is the staff will give a short report.
Yes, I can be very brief, as we had recommended this for the consent agenda tonight. This is Alliance Steel. They own the building at 81 St. Anthony Parkway. It is a recycling facility. There are four applications before you. The first is a conditional use permit to expand the facility. They're proposing a 15,000-square-foot addition on the north side of the building. Two variances, one is to reduce the off-street parking requirement from 40 to 24 spaces, and then a variance of the surfacing requirements, and then they do have the site plan review. Back in 2000, the recycling facility was approved for this location, and several of those conditions, the applicant is asking to modify. And just to summarize, I guess, I think through our conditions of approval, I think we've clarified the conditions by allowing the containers to be stored outside, but what we are requesting to do, and something that both neighborhood organizations that reviewed this project are requesting, is that we get a container management plan from the applicant so we can better understand the utilization of the land outside of the site. We are recommending approval of all of the applications. Let me just show you the site plan really quick. So, this is their site plan. As part of the addition and their stormwater management requirements, they are going to be creating two stormwater ponds in the site. One is a lined pond, and this is lined because it needs to capture any heavy metals that do come off of the property. And so, this is just like a heavy fabric liner that will be used to capture the stormwater there for treatment purposes. And then, the other is a stormwater pond located in the northeast corner of the property, excuse me, northwest corner of the property, and that pond is going to capture the runoff from the roof. And this pond in the southwest corner will capture all of the surface runoff then from around the site. The addition you can see is on the north side of the building. They do have seven loading docks on site, three existing, and then four will be constructed up here as part of the addition. And then, their parking for their employees is located in this area. So, the conditions that we're asking for that are not our typical conditions is that they store nothing near the entrance to the site. The site is gated for security purposes. In some of the photos and also during this recent site visit, there were containers and whatnot being stored up there. We are requesting that they not keep anything at that entrance. St. Anthony Parkway is part of the grand rounds, and so, to improve the aesthetics of the site from the parkway, we are requesting everything to be cut back. And I think some of that will actually be taken care of by the additional parking that they're going to be locating here along the west property line, as they do also have containers there now currently. And then, also requesting that storage container plan for purposes of moving forward. It is just kind of a mess out there right now, and so, to help clean that up, just looking to have that come in. They're also losing a lot of land, exterior storage land for the addition and then the two stormwater ponds, and so, they will need to better utilize that space outside. We are also requesting, as part of the surfacing variance, they have about 390 feet, I believe it is, from where the concrete ends to where you hit the public street. And the zoning code requirement for access to driveways and whatnot is 20 feet, and so, we felt that it was at the 340 or 390 feet. We felt that that was sufficient, a sufficient distance to have the tires cleaned by going over the pavement, and so, we are recommending approval. However, the surface out there in the container storage area is very pokey, and so, we were asking or requesting that as a condition of approval. They bring in additional Class V to even out the surfaces, and I think that would be accomplished through the addition anyway. And it was 340 feet, I should clarify. And then, for the site plan review, again, we're recommending approval to provide better screening in the winter months, which seems to be growing longer in Minnesota. We are asking for 20 evergreen trees to be planted on the site, trees that will maintain greenery year-round. Where they need to be located, I did have an email conversation with the applicant late last week. Obviously, along St. Anthony Parkway, but any additional trees that could be over in the southeast side of the site would be beneficial as you're coming over the St. Anthony Parkway Bridge, which is going to be rebuilt this year. And I should say, I don't mention this in the report because it's not quite known, but the city is going to be taking an easement for a portion of this property in order to reconstruct the land, and so, that will be a temporary situation during the construction of that bridge. So, to get that greenery and to provide screening throughout the year, we're asking for 20 evergreen trees, as they were short on the required amount of trees that they were going to be, excuse me, the shrubs that they were going to have on site. And then, we are also asking that they remove the Al Johnson trucking sign that is near the entrance, as it's not there anymore. And so, the applicant doesn't have any other signage on the site, but if they wanted to, we would just ask that they meet the zoning code requirements for signage. So, those are the conditions we are recommending approval. I know there's someone here that wanted to discuss the project, but I will stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, two quick questions. All of the roof drainage will be captured in the stormwater pond, or is it just the new building?
You know, we talked about this at the very first meeting that I had, I think.
It's just by looking at the plan, it looks like the sizing would be too small to capture all of the building roof.
I don't have that in my notes. We could ask the applicant. It is the addition, at least, that 15,000, but I'm not sure about the existing roof.
And then, through Public Works or Public Works' response, with the turning movements for the truck, the graphic in the packet, the semis are intended to go down the slope, and it looks like it's probably about a 5 percent slope. Were there any concerns from Public Works regarding that?
None that were mentioned, no.
Okay.
It hasn't had, it's gone through PDR, but not for the formal routing of it, so I can raise it as a specific question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other Commissioners with questions for staff at this point? If not, thank you very much. We will open the public hearing. I'd like to hear from the applicant first. You can answer Commissioner Slack's question about the rainwater captured, and say anything else you want to about your project. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the commission. My name's Jeff Ellard with Wink Associates. I'm here on behalf of G&amp;G Real Estate and Alliance Steel. Address is 1802 Wooddale Avenue, Woodbury, Minnesota, 55125. I'd like to, I mean, I have no specific comments related to the conditions that were proposed. Those are, we're fine with those. Related to the question about stormwater, we are actually able to reroute everything except for 20,000 square feet, so there's a 48,000-square-foot existing building and the 15,000 addition. We're able to get everything but 20,000 to that stormwater infiltration pond, so we are taking more than the addition to that infiltration pond. And related to the turning movements, we believe we can adequately maneuver the trucks around the site. And I'm open for questions. I also have Larry Swigbaum, who's the environmental and operations manager for Alliance Steel here, who can answer any other specific questions.
Okay, let's see if there are any other questions for you. I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on this item number five?
Yes, President Tucker and commission members. Patrick Cavidra, 3041 Grand Street Northeast, and representing the concerned citizens and martial terrorists, which is not the neighborhood that this actually is in, but the neighborhood directly across St. Anthony Boulevard from it. I probably live closer to it than anybody else in the territory. Playing kind of devil's advocate here, the reduction to 24 parking spaces was based on, I believe it was 23 employees they told us they had, but I see no requirement that they put in additional parking spaces if their employee count changes. Just something for consideration. If they're going to reduce the amount of hard surface, is there any kind of a sweeping plan that could be required? If the dirt or whatever from the loading docks in the east end of the building gets tracked onto that hard surface, it'll soon get tracked right out on the St. Anthony Parkway. So, a sweeping plan, I think, would be in order in that case. We were told it would be a baling operation only and not a shredding operation, as some of their other sites in North Minneapolis do. That would introduce a whole new set of dust control if, in fact, they did move shredding to that location. I don't see anything in here that says that can't be done. And the other thing was, they talked about 20 pine trees on the site. It doesn't say whether they can plant 20 trees and they die tomorrow and they don't have to replace them or maintain them. So, my thought would be they must be maintained, and hopefully, as stated, they would be on the south side or the east side to screen St. Anthony Parkway. Devil's advocate, they could put them on the north side to keep the wind off the property. It's nothing I see in here in writing that says they couldn't do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? Okay, if not, anyone else wishing to speak on this topic? Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have four applications before us. Any discussion, motions? Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, let's see here. I'd like to move approval of item 5A, the conditional use permit, item 5B, the variance for parking, item 5C, the variance for surfacing requirements, and item 5D, the site plan review with the stated conditions.
So, all four?
All five.
With staff recommendation. Okay, let's move, we have a second on that? Okay, any discussion? Commissioner Lipke-Pier?
Yeah, I'd like to amend Site Plan D, so, condition three. To read, a minimum of 20 evergreen trees should be planted and maintained on the site along St. Anthony Parkway in the southeast corner of the site.
On southeast corner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we have that down? Okay. Let's, any discussion on that? We'll take that as an amendment to get more specific about the 20 trees. Any discussion? Let's get a second, this for fun. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of adding those conditions to condition three? Say aye. Opposed? Okay, so, we have all four with condition three of item D modified slightly. Any other discussion? If not, clerk, please roll on item number five.
Bender, Brown, Forni, Gagnon, Kronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack. That's 7-0.
Thank you very much. We move on to item number eight. And a report from Andrew Lisca.
Good afternoon, President, commission members. And this zoning text amendment is to allow for donation collection bins to be operated by for-profit entities as an accessory use. Little background on this, in 2011, a zoning text amendment was passed that allowed donation collection bins as an accessory use for nonprofit entities, provided certain criteria were met as well as a license was issued. With growing demand for sustainability and green jobs, the for-profit sector businesses are now inquiring about establishing these donation collection bins, and currently, this is prohibited by code. As a part of the existing code, 537-110, donation collection bins are for nonprofit entities only. This might be too hard to read, but worth noting, there are several criteria established before donation collection bins are permitted. There are currently 11 points. Staff is looking to, or this zoning text amendment aims to remove point one, which is specific to nonprofit entities, and there's a strike-through on point 10, which mentions nonprofit. Included in this range of criteria, it mentions what zoning parcels these are allowed in, notes how many bins can be allowed on each lot. It dictates the size of the bin, what can be stored in the bins, states that the bins are not to overflow and to be serviced daily, not to be in required yards, not to impede on any circulation. That's just kind of a short rundown rather than go through that whole list. We can touch on that more if more questions come up. And with zoning code, or zoning text amendments, we look at a few things: purpose, timeliness, and the comprehensive plan in determining its appropriateness. So, we will be addressing those aspects now, specifically, purpose. What is the reason for this amendment? The purpose or reason is to allow for-profit entities to operate these donation collection What problem is the amendment designed to solve? As I mentioned earlier, currently, 537-110, specific to donation collection bins, is for nonprofit entities only. This amendment aims to reduce or eliminate that clause and keep all other amendments or other criteria with the initial zoning text. This also aims to bring green jobs to this community. This is a diversity that can be added in the job sector, specifically in the private sector, associated with green jobs and sustainability and reducing waste that can be utilized in other forms. What public purpose will be served by this amendment? With more opportunities to donate throughout the community, an increase in reusable textiles can be expected. Statistics do vary, but a large percentage of used textiles that end up in landfills can be reused or repurposed. And again, this is just aiming to expand these bins to collect more goods that would otherwise end up in the landfill. What problems might this amendment create? Expanding to for-profit entities would surely increase the number of bins that would be allowed in the city. With this increase in number of bins, I think it'd be reasonable to expect that more items would be left outside of the bins, activity occurring around these bins outside of normal business hours. Bins may be located in areas where onsite circulation may be obstructed, visibility might be obstructed, as well as pedestrian flow. And again, the criteria associated with the donation collection bins aims to eliminate all of these adverse effects, but with an increase in the number of bins, I think it would be imprudent to think that these effects wouldn't be occurring. Next, we move on to timeliness. Is the amendment timely? This zoning text amendment is a part of the continual process to update code. Again, we've received comments from the for-profit sector inquiring about establishing bins, and that's why you see this zoning text amendment before you. Are there any consequences in denying this amendment? If the amendment is denied, it's basically going to be status quo in going forward regarding donation collection bins and the amount of refuse that's associated with, the amount of refuse associated with the disposal of reusable textiles in the community. The opportunity to donate and the general promotion of sustainability would remain the same. Finally, we'll look at the comprehensive plan. Policy 1-1, establish land use regulations to achieve the highest possible development standard, enhance the environment, protect the public health, support a vital mix of land uses, and promote flexible approaches to carry out the comprehensive plan. This zoning text amendment specifically aims at enhancing the environment as well as protecting public health, just with the simple notion that with more goods donated, it'll be less goods that'll end up in landfills. Policy 1-4, develop and maintain strong and successful commercial and mixed-use areas with a wide range of character and functions to serve the needs of current and future This, we're looking at allowing these donation collection bins to serve both this community and abroad. The donated goods typically are bundled and sold off, whether they are repurposed as clothing or repurposed as another aspect of clothing, whether that cotton is being reused or whatever that may be. So, obviously, that's looking at the current needs of today as well as the future use. And policy 1-4, support private sector growth, maintain a healthy diverse economy. With allowing for-profit sectors to operate donation collection bins, we are getting an aspect of green jobs that wouldn't be here otherwise. There, obviously, sustainability is big in going forward, and with this, kind of creates new jobs, whether that's packing and shipping just associated with these raw materials, or more bins popping up and just more jobs associated with those directly. Recommendations? The Department of Community Planning and Economic Development has no recommendation regarding this zoning text amendment for Chapter 537-110, and I'll be here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I fully understood why you weren't making a, or what the primary reason is for not making a recommendation on this. Is it, do you have concerns about the potential for visual clutter, or are there other concerns that you're not necessarily recommending approval of this text amendment?
There is that, and you don't see too many of these in the area and abroad. It can be kind of a touchy subject in terms of being considered just an accessory use. Many cities will just consider these an accessory use and will let their code dictate, well, it'll basically limit what can be stored outside. So, obviously, if there's no push for these bins, they won't have anything specific. Minneapolis is in a unique situation, being that we have decided that donation collection bins are a specific use rather than just a standard accessory use, and we have limited those to nonprofit. So, I guess it's just kind of... So I guess it's just kind of an uncharted territory.
We have Commissioner Kronzer and Gagnon and Slack.
Thank you, President Tucker. Question about the labeling of these bins. Is there anything in the proposed ordinance change that requires notice that you're donating to a for-profit entity versus a nonprofit entity? And, you know, what kind of thoughts had the city staff had on that?
Donation collection bins, the six-point down, as it's currently written, does note that it, bins shall be clearly marked to identify the specific items and materials, including the name, address, email, and phone number, that may be shown as a nonprofit or for-profit, or that seems like that could be just a name and you wouldn't know. Correct. There's no, there's no current, no current regulation that states that they would have to be labeled as for-profit or nonprofit.
Commissioner Gagnon?
Did you guys look at reactions from other big cities that have done this? Because I haven't found any positive news media, that it's been very hurtful to things like Goodwill, that people are confused, that they're for-profit, that money from the sale of these goes overseas and it doesn't circulate back through the community, it doesn't create jobs. I mean, I'm just trying, I just haven't found anything that's positive in other cities like New York, Syracuse, that have done this.
I would agree. I looked at several big communities around the country, and it was difficult to find positive reactions to these donation collection bins, and that is in part why we are having no recommendation. Cities like St. Paul don't actively prohibit donation collection bins for for-profit sectors, and they do have some messy bins, to be honest.
Commissioner Slack?
Are there any issues or concerns with the existing boxes related to code enforcement?
I did talk to our zoning inspectors, and they said that they'd maybe received five or six complaints regarding the donation collection bins. And they said in the last five years. Obviously, we haven't even allowed them for five years. But they did note, too, that a lot of complaints, or a few of the complaints, did stem around people just not thinking they were permitted after they were. So it was more so just the use itself, rather than clutter outside, or sidewalks being blocked, or what may have. So. Worth noting, the city has five current operating donation collection bins that are licensed.
Okay. Any other commissioners with questions of staff at this point? I don't see any. Thank you very much. At this point, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this proposed amendment, come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlo Caballero. I'm Director of Government Affairs and in-house attorney for Use Again. Our warehouse is actually in New Brighton. It's 82nd Avenue, Southeast, New Brighton, Minnesota. We actually are here to, first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Glidden for bringing this issue to staff, and as for staff's work with regard to this. My main role is, I work with our National Association, which is SMART, Secondary Materials and Recycled Textiles, that's the acronym, SMART, and along with Use Again, to advocate exactly as staff had indicated, the collection bins are not always identified specifically. So as you well know, the zoning codes, whether it's outside storage, accessory use, you name it, it's, depending on how the staff or the powers that be would interpret those. So what we've done is, we've gone around the country, we've advocated, and we've successfully passed ordinances and regulations, and actually, the city's ordinance contains most of the provisions, I think. Commissioner, you had identified one thing, one item that is missing, and it should be identified, that every operator's, it's just routine, there's state laws in California, Missouri, several states that actually mandate the specific labeling of those bins, and it's in uniform. It's actually, the only piece that's missing is the tax status of the operator from that section. The two-inch type and et cetera is verbatim. We would support that, we advocate that. This process started with us sharing a model ordinance that we had developed with SMART, with Councilwoman Glidden, who brought the issue forward. A lot of the concerns that are raised really come down to the specifics of the operator. Yes, we're a for-profit operator. The advantages we have in that regard is we're 100% employee-based, we're local, we operate in every county in Minnesota, and as well as virtually every community. Minneapolis, its largest city, seems to be the anomaly. Bins are allowed, but we're just not allowed to operate them based on our tax status. That's something we'd sought to change. We do partner with Eureka Recycling in St. Paul. Because of the unique circumstance, we actually collect the textiles at the curb. That's possible there. We also have bins in St. Paul. The curbside collection process is possible in St. Paul due to the unique trucks that they utilize. The textile material is placed within the cardboard material, which goes into a clean, separate section of the truck, so therefore, the material is still useful. We operate the same as many of our competitors that would be in the city, throughout the state, and throughout the nation, actually. Everyone aggregates the same material, and it's all sold wholesale, the same markets. A lot of our material is returned wholesale. The Savers in your area or the community are one of our main customers out of our warehouse. We have loads going there every week. That's how that material is, that's how they actually stock their stores. Some of the other nonprofit thrift store operations do, you rely on the donations, that's how they stock their store. There are cast-offs in the items that aren't sold, they're sold in that secondary market as well. So with that, with that said, I mean, I'm here really to answer questions as well, but we fully support the ordinance and the change, and we think the difference comes down to, the regulations are on hand, the difference comes down to the operators. And I know we, you know, the little things that we can provide, 24/7 response time, 24-hour guarantee, we have a written agreement with every site that we operate on with that site for permission, which is generally required in the ordinance as well.
Okay. Let's see if there are any questions. Commissioner Kronzer?
One quick question. The bins that you operate or support, are you allowed as a person to donate something you know is not wearable, that you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Will be recycled?
The point, the green aspects of textiles, you know, I mistakenly skipped over it, there's, textile material right now, EPA, textiles are really the next big thing. You have, in the grand waste scheme, you have organics are the big item to be taken out of the waste stream. Textiles are the next percentage. The US EPA states that 15, we right now have a national recycling rate of about 15%. Minnesota's is actually right about nine. We're actually supporting legislation to create a goal, textile recycling goal with the state legislature. So we don't know whether that's going to pass yet or not, but that's in the process. But yes, a 90-something, 90, a high 90% of all textile material is recyclable, reusable. The vast majority of the items everyone collects is really resold as clothes. Then you have the items that are turned into primarily wiping rags, and then we all enjoy quieter, cars and dishwashers are my best example, because of the insulation blankets. Menards, I always forget whether Menards is around here or not, but they, you see the over-the-counter sold denim insulation bats. That's a unique customer, I'm sorry, retail, provided option that's available because of those materials. So yes.
So the bins are actually labeled, donate your unwearable clothes?
Sure. It's, well, oh, no, they're labeled for all the textile material. It's not saying that that's specifically are all you want. The idea is everyone, you want the whole mix.
Right. So.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about your firm's protocol for dealing with some of the code enforcement issues elsewhere in the metro area. If someone drops furniture or something next to the bin, are you prepared to respond to that and clean it up? Or do you rely more on the property owners for that?
No, no, no. We are, we, under our agreements and everything, we maintain 10 to 15 feet around every bin area, and that goes for everything. You know, whether, whatever accumulates there, we remove. You brought up great examples. Every one of our trucks has a lift gate on it, so whatever's there, we remove. And, because that's the big concern. Our commitment is not only to the community, but to that specific site host, so that we don't become a hassle for them. So, and that's, and we get, that's the main purpose of the 24-hour response time. Within 24 hours of us being notified of any issue, it could be, the bin could be damaged because of a accident, or weather, you name it, graffiti, you know, those are the items that we take care of.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Slack?
Can you give me a sense of how you select a location for a box? And then, I think you mentioned that you have boxes in St. Paul. How many do you have in St. Paul?
I'd have to ask Greg. Greg's our operation, how many? 75 in St. Paul. Oh, I'm sorry. How do we select them? We employ, we call them community recycling specialists or territory managers. They actually go out and talk to the, what we refer to as a site host. They would negotiate the agreement for approval. The sites are selected by where a bin can operate. We know this, you need a certain amount of space, we have a truck that has to service it, we have to have easy access, you have to be able to place the bin so it's not in the sight lines, or, you know, on the right-of-way. All those factors are generally considered. I mean, you're a large, you know, ideally, you find a large shopping center, you want to be there where the traffic is, so that it's convenient, the convenience factor is really what drives the business model for all these bins. So whether you're someplace where the public's generally going, it just makes it easier for them to go their way and discard their items, instead of throwing them in the trash.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on item number eight here? Come on up and give your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Kavina again. Thank you, President Tucker. 341 Grand Street Northeast, Minneapolis, Minnesota, 55418. Was just my thought, is the labeling for the public, how are they going to know? I think the label should also be the same size as the company or whatever, so it's not lost someplace. You can specify a size, but if the, what do you want to say, the Goodwill or whatever label is five times as big, who's going to look at it? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Anyone else on item eight? Okay. I will close the public hearing. We have just one item here without staff recommendations, so we can pass it along without recommendation. Recommend approval or recommend denial, I would think.
Mr. President, I will recommend approval of this text amendment, amending Chapter 537.
Okay. It's been moved to approve this amendment. Do we have a second? Moved and seconded? Okay. Any discussion? Did you want to follow up, Commissioner Brown?
I can, just very quickly, reading through the changes, I'm generally comfortable with this, particularly considering that it seems that since we have been allowing this type of activity for nonprofit organizations, it seems like the city's regulations and standards have been working fairly well. Certainly, it's something we can continue to monitor in the future, so I don't have a big concern about opening that up to for-profit corporations as well.
Okay. You had a clarification, Mr. Wittenberg?
Sure. Chair Tucker, President Tucker, just a couple of quick things. In your folders that you received today, there is actually an updated version that has the exact same language, I believe, but just some formatting changes. There is actually one very minor formatting change that I'd like to also add if the commission moves this forward with a recommendation. After the italicized donation collection bin, that was added with a colon previously, rather than a period, consistent with the rest of the chapter, so there's another change for you.
We're going to the colon?
We're going from, from the colon to the.
We wouldn't want to miss that one.
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Gagnon?
Thank you. And you also may want to make ten "the" instead of "he" at the beginning, if you want to get very detail-oriented. I am going to, I'm just going to push back that if we have five registered bins right now, and I know that the city staffing, I don't think we have the capacity to look after 75 more, potentially, and knowing probably that, you know, they're not the prettiest things in the world, these bins. I do think the for-profit, the reason that bins are created is so that Goodwill can offer job training and very low-priced clothes to individuals, and not send them overseas. And I just feel like there's a different way that clothes can be recycled in the city of Minneapolis. I think it needs to be thoughtful. I think it's a fabulous idea. I don't mind getting for-profit businesses involved in the recycling of textiles, but I don't think this is the way to go about it.
Okay. Other comments? Commissioner Lipke-Pier?
I would just like to add that on, should this pass, I would like to see number five, where they talk about the information contained on the bins. I think that Commissioner Kronzer's idea of clearly labeling, whether that's a standard format or not, whether it's for a for-profit or for a nonprofit, would be a piece of information that'd be helpful for the public to have. So I guess I'd like that added, where it talks about the name, address, email, phone number, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. Would you like to offer that as an amendment to the motion to add that language to item five?
Yes, I would.
Okay. That would be to add information about the tax status of the collector.
Yeah. I think even just making it very clear, either it reads a for-profit entity or a nonprofit entity at the same two-inch font, just so it's not in some tiny eight-point font that no one can see.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the amendment to add that language to item five? Okay. Any other discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Okay. Any further discussion on the main motion to send this forward with our approval? Seeing none. Clerk, please call a roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Forney.
Aye.
Gagnon.
No.
And Kronzer.
Aye.
Lipke-Pier.
Aye.
Slack. So that is six to one.
Six to one. That's approved, noting two small typographical corrections. Okay. Thank you very much. That concludes our business. Any announcements, Mr. Wittenberg?
Just a relatively small agenda for this Thursday's committee, the whole.
Okay. And that's preceded by an executive committee meeting at 3:30?
I believe you're correct.
Okay. See you then. Thank you all.